Paul Gonzalez.
Here.
Carl Stazinski.
Here.
Matt Cook.
Here.
Dave Hausmann.
Here. Next, we'll review for conflict of interest. Does anybody on the board have a conflict or potential with any of the items on tonight's agenda?
Just for the record, I had a question about my standing as far as the second item and talked with the attorney, and the attorney agreed that I do not have a conflict.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Hearing none. Next, we'll look at the agenda. Would anybody like to approve it?
I'll move the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, October 12th, for the meeting for the East Bay Charter Township Zoning Board of Appeals.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes from our 9:14 regular meeting. Some of those minutes are to come in the future, aren't they?
What minutes?
From the last meeting?
They're not in here. Okay, we have to put those in there. This is the last meeting.
So, on we go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And some outstanding minutes that we missed?
Yeah, what I got confused by, and it's certainly my mistake, but number four, other outstanding minutes will be presented, and...
Were there sight vision minutes?
That threw me off a bit. No, we're good. All is well.
A motion to approve the minutes. 9:14, 2021.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. At this time, we'd like to invite public comment, but only for things that are not on tonight's agenda. Does anybody in the audience have comment for items not on tonight's agenda? All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to appeal request 6-21 by Bob Lander. He is the owner of a parcel of land commonly known as 429 Peninsula Trail, Traverse City. Property identification number 28-03-610-039-00 in the Lakes, LA zoning district. The request requires a variance from Section 505, Table Number 1, yard setbacks, specifically a 15-foot front yard variance resulting in a five-foot setback from Peninsula Trail. The minimum front yard setback for accessory structures in the LA district is 20 feet. And we did indeed hold a sight vision, a sight visit at the subject property this evening, and we'll proceed. Would the applicant or their representative please step up to the lectern? Tell us who you are and what your relationship is to them.
My name is Travis Reimer. I'm the contractor of the potential future project, representing Mr. Lander.
And could you please tell us about your request, sir?
Just the request is only a very small corner. If you have the site plan, it shows that just the very corner is what actually, where we're asking for the five feet, it would be the, I believe, the northeast corner. And the house is actually over the actual setback itself, the existing house. So, that corner is in line, house, corner of the garage going this way. So, you're not talking the whole front of it. It's just a portion of it to be within zoning. We cannot put the garage on the other side of the house because of the septic field and tank already existing, and obviously with the topography being on such a slope, it's our only option right there. So, we've had it surveyed, site plans drawn up and everything, and we were just asking for a little corner, just so they have means for storage. There's no basement. There's nowhere to store anything, so it's not an obtuse big garage, 24 by 26, eight foot tall. So, yeah, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you. Feel free to have a seat if you wish. We might have questions for you as this meeting goes on. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak or comment on this request?
My name's Kathy Nedeckin. I live at 442 Peninsula Trail, just up the road. And the concern with the five foot from the road is there is both a hill that kind of causes a little bit of a blind area and a curve that comes around that also causes some blind areas. The traffic on our road is quite extensive, especially in the summertime. Even though it's posted at 35, we have a lot of drivers that go quite fast. Or, the way I'm understanding, the way the garage is laying out, and if they were to have five feet to pull out from their garage, and they own a truck and an SUV, so the fronts of their vehicles and where they're sitting would probably put them more than five feet, so they would still, in my mind, be in the garage. So, as they're trying to pull out onto the road, they would not have clear sight of distance for either direction of where the hill is or where the curve is. So, that would require them to have to pull out into the street to even see if they could safely proceed onto the road. Because we have a lot of traffic, and some of you were out there and saw how fast they go and how close, it's a concern as to the safety of the people driving on the road, the residents, and, you know, for those of us in the area that also drive that path. So, my concern is more of that agreement or variance be five feet. I do not think that's safe. It should be what is required that is currently in the zoning rules.
Okay. Thank you. And would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Howard Cusano, 445 Peninsula Trail. I was at the site review with you folks as well, and I'd like to know from the builder, is there any adjustment that can be made in the positioning of the house to avoid that five-foot distance?
It would either be, if we did, we would be encroaching on the septic of the lake.
Have you explored any other alternatives with the homeowner in terms of the size of the garage to limit that setback?
The most we could probably shorten it would be two feet as far as depth, at the very most. But then, you close that, and there's no room for storage per se.
So, I have a clear understanding then of the, of changing the angle of the garage to reduce that five-foot distance. Is that gonna be done?
There is.
Would anyone else like to speak? Of course.
If you guys noticed, as far as the safety of it, if you look where they're parked now, they're right on the curve with their tail, I mean, if they don't pull all the way in, they don't even have three feet before they're, they have to back in to the actual road on the curve. This, if they back into their garage at least and pull out, you know, same thing as what they do now, but as a safety, where they're parking now, and if they have company come over, that's very unsafe. I have, I've had to park on that road. That's even worse parking on the shoulder, where if they do have family come and visit, they can pull their vehicles in. That's two more spots, another two more spots over there. So, now we're taking less cars off the road as well. So, as a safety standpoint, it's actually, in my understanding, safer where it's at, or with the garage going in versus having to park right on that curve with this much before you're backed into the road. So, with that, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
The difference from where they're parked now is they have no walls obstructing their view. So, where they're parking, they actually can see as they're backing out, because they're actually right on that curve, versus where the garage is going to be. And again, they have obstruction of walls, and they're in big vehicles, so they're gonna have to pull out quite a bit, or at least into the roadway, to actually have clear view because they have a garage wall on both sides of them. I mean, it's on an angle. If I could, the area wasn't staked out, so it wasn't a good way to get a visual to actually figure out how a vehicle would be pulling out or backing out, because if most people pull into their garages, if they're backing out and they have a truck that has a truck bed, that's even more distance that they have to come out into the road.
Thank you.
Mary Woodward, 438 Peninsula Trail. That house has been run into by motorcycle. There's mailboxes right around the corner that have been hit. It's a very nasty corner. I could say that when they bought that house, they should have taken in consideration that it didn't have a garage, and there was a reason for it, and it didn't have storage because, you know, and there were seasonal people. So, what more do you have to store? I mean, I pay for my storage, for my extra stuff that I don't, can't put in my property, so go for it.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
No Urban 449 Peninsula Trail. I guess I have the same concern that's been addressed before. If you have a pickup truck, I don't know how you can safely back it out with only five feet and have, be able to see what's coming up over the, over the hill. It, you know, a pickup truck, where they about 20 feet long-ish? So, you're, seems like by the, you know, you're already in the road before you actually can see anything, anything coming. And that's simply, we were hoping to have it, you know, staked out where that one corner was, but I'd just like that to be taken into consideration if you're backing out a vehicle, you know, what's the, you know, appropriate amount of vision that you need for sight? You know, people come up over, over the bump by 445, and then you're right, you're right there. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
Are you talking about Peninsula Trail property?
We are. Yes, ma'am.
I would love to.
Please.
Sorry, I thought we started at seven.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Anne Vries. I live at 421 passing lane, next door to the property in question. I see no reason whatsoever why these people who have moved here from Texas and improved their home from the minute they bought the property should be held back from, from getting to do this. They have put so much into this township, into their home, and they love it here, and two people very deserving of being able to park their car in a garage. I have absolutely zero problem with them doing anything, because anything they do is always a positive, a plus to the neighborhood, and they're just wonderful people. And I just, I guess that's all. I don't know if anybody has questions for me living next door, but I hope there haven't been any complaints about it, because everybody wants to improve their home as much as they can and keep it up, keep it nice. So, that's, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak about this?
I guess if we let this guy do it, then how about the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy, sit down the street?
Sure. So, in response to your question, ma'am, the Zoning Board of Appeals and the ordinance that we need to follow states that we have to look at each request on a case-by-case basis and not allow it to be influenced by the place down the road.
So, there would be another meeting for another person?
Possibly.
That they would just get to do it, just because the other person got to do it?
Right. If, if they need a variance because they can't conform to the law, then yes, they would need to come and make that request here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
The only other person in the whole area that doesn't have a garage is me.
Okay.
And I don't plan on putting one in, but I might someday, but I own the property to do it on, so I don't think there's gonna be anybody doing it up and down the street.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
One last thing about the safety. Everybody's thinking about the length of backing out of that garage. They're forgetting that if they're backing out of that garage, they're in 24 feet plus what they have there. And if they back in, I mean, I understand the safety. Everybody wants things to be safe, but I, if we're real, and you drive around there and look at how close some of these other garages are, there is no reason, this is back even further than some. The house is already, like I said, over five feet of the setbacks. It was built that way. This is just a corner, and as far as storage, it's on a slab. They have jet skis, they've got boats, kayaks, and I can't help that someone would rather pay for a storage unit than have your own garage. I mean, to each their own. It doesn't exclude the fact that, as the homeowner is, what they put into it, it's their property, it's a small little corner. So, you know, if we took the time and drove around that whole lake and looked at how close some of these other garages are in safety, I mean, if they're worried about safety like that, the road should be fixed. That's a nightmare anyway, so. But, that's another story.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm just, I mean, it's five feet, I think, if the structure was there and you saw how much room they actually really do, are gonna have to back out, it's not, it's not as unsafe, and I appreciate the fact they're worried about safety, but I guess with that, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Now, would anybody who has not already spoken care to say anything or ask any questions about this request? All right. Hearing none. We'll close this public input, and we'll open the application up to the board for discussion and action.
Yeah, this one would have been a good one to flag the corners of that one building, so that way we could have seen that, because I actually paced it off, and I would say it was wrong when I paced it off, but that might have been a good one, so we could have seen that 23 feet on the one side. So, but now, I'm glad you said that. And I guess, well, someone else can start. I got a couple other things.
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
And then evidently, well, staff thinks it meets all the basic conditions and the special conditions, and I'm kinda agreeing with them, but that's one thing, three. Then it says, basically said there'd be no negative impact or adverse effects upon properties, on surrounding properties, and it keeps on going on, but...
Sure.
Now, would road safety be an adverse effect on properties, on surrounding property owners? That's my one question.
If, if that's what you decide.
Yeah, okay. But I want someone else's opinion. Yeah, that's what I want, yeah.
So, I think it's a, both, both sides were valid concern.
Yeah.
There is a nasty curve there.
Yeah.
And then there's a hill on the other side. I personally think the location of the garage is a little safer to pull out than the paved area that's there, if they back in to the garage.
Okay.
And then also to keep in mind that this garage is for future residents of the property that might be driving a Prius.
Yeah.
And have plenty of room to see as they're backing out versus a big truck.
Okay.
I didn't see a hazard posed by that based on the landscape of the road.
That's the only question I had. But I'm glad that the 23-foot, that matters a little bit. One more thing. Now, you would be okay with 24 by 24, you said? Can we throw that out there, or not negotiate it?
Yeah, I mean, 24 by 24 would be fine. I believe it would. I mean, we'd have to amend all of our plans and everything, which we've got a lot of to do, but I know that it's, it would be a foot off the end. It's not the depth. The depth is 24. It's the width.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
So...
I just wanted that.
You know, when you, when you put a two-car garage at 24 feet, try opening your car door next to it. Guy got me.
They won't give me a variance here, though. Look at it, look at the bear.
Just, just to be clear, so the, the variance is for 15 feet, right? That is the variance being requested. There was a comment from the builder that the applicant had a bunch of kayaks and jet skis. What's, what's the intent for the storage of this? Is, is that what you said, that the applicant has a bunch of, are they, I guess my question is, are they actually using it to store the vehicles in, or is this gonna be used to store?
When they're here. They, they live in Texas part-time, so if they want to leave a vehicle, but they do have jet skis, so they can do what they will. Summertime when they're here, those are in the water. When they're not here, they can go in the garage.
Okay. And I guess I just was thinking about this safety issue, and I guess you could, you could equally make a, make a safety argument that having a garage might be safer during the wintertime, when people typically are in a hurry, they don't get all the snow off their car, so you've now got a car without snow stacked up on the windows, so maybe you can see a little bit better.
And also, I mean, I'm kinda confused here. We're really asking for a five, only five feet.
You, you need 20 feet, and, and you're asking to be within five, right? On the corner?
We are asking for you to allow us to encroach five feet.
That's not, maybe, maybe that's not the way it's worded here, or the way that...
Yeah.
It states that the detached garage would be constructed five feet from Peninsula Trail.
Right. A five-foot setback, which would require a 15-foot variance.
Okay, yes, okay.
Are, are we clear, Mr. Taylor?
That's my understanding from the start, from the start of this, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, of course.
Could the builder come up to the microphone here, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's being recorded, so we need to have...
Sure.
I'm looking at the, the garage right now, and, and the corner, the, the way I'm looking at, the right-hand corner. That's your five feet. Now, when I'm looking at the driveway, though, or into the, into the road itself, on the, on the left-hand side of that driveway, how, how long is that?
Let me...
Yeah, thank you. From the, let's say, from the edge of the...
From the road, which side are you?
Okay, I'm, let's see now, where's, okay, if this is north, I'm looking at the, probably the west end. I think the, the east, the east end is the five-foot point?
Okay.
Okay. The opposite, on the, on the actual, which looks like the slab going into the, the road is driveway?
Yep.
Okay. How, what are the, what is the dimensions of that, of that driveway? Because obviously you got a five-point at the, at the tip, but coming out of the doors is more. I mean, how much is that more? Is that seven feet, eight feet?
I guess I'm not, because I think with that little paper is different than this.
May, may we see what you're looking at?
Yeah. Yeah. Right here.
Yeah, here's your garage. Okay, so here's the, where's the road? Here's the road, right?
Here's your five feet.
All right, here's your five feet right here.
Yep.
So, here is your driveway.
Yep.
All right. If this is five feet, what's, what's this end?
To...
From here to here?
This point. Roughly 30 feet.
30?
Because this is, for every inch, it's 10 feet.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna say roughly...
So, this end from the coming out of the garage to the road is 30 feet?
Yep.
And that's to the actual paved road?
Correct.
To the paved road. And then what's, this would be what?
Slightly shorter, maybe 28, 25.
So, when he comes out, he's got 28 feet here and 30 feet there.
Can I have my brother have the mic on?
I'm sorry.
Please, just so we...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Just when you're answering him.
Okay.
Just be hitting the mic, please.
So, yeah, roughly, the one side is about 30 feet, give or take, and then the side where the ease, or the, the five feet, is anywhere from 27, 28 feet, and not much difference.
Yes.
That'd help, too.
You want this?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, one, one other question. In the back of the garage, the back now, towards the lake, do you know what the distance is from the rear of the garage to the lake?
It's about 52 feet.
Ooh, okay.
So, we're, that's why I was saying there's really no room. You know, if we turned it one way, now we're encroaching on...
Yeah, right.
You know? So, this was where we could go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Further questions? All right. I have a question regarding the elevation, the proposed elevation. Are you going to do a foundation?
Yeah.
Or, okay?
We have to, just for the topography.
Okay.
We have to do basically a small eight-foot foundation around it in order to get us level with the road, above, above road, above...
Okay, so you'll be approximately how high above road if this, this is approved?
Two feet tops.
Okay.
Just, we have to be above that road for slope of runoff, so anywhere from a foot and a half to two feet tops.
Okay. And, and I just had a question that may not have so much bearing on your request, but did the applicant consider rotating the proposed building a bit to be a bit more square with their property line?
We can do that.
Okay.
Because that will not encroach on anything. We want it, you know, when, when Caleb draws these up, he can't say 100% it's gonna be just like that, but we want it to be more parallel with everything and lined up.
So, so is your representation on your request packet the way you actually want to orient the building, or would it be somewhat different than that?
On that packet that I gave you?
Mm-hmm.
Can I look at it?
You may. You may. And you'll want to step back to the microphone to respond, please.
Okay, now, this, this drawing is a little different. It's got the driveway actually kind of curving, like what it's showing there. I think it's a little bit over, overdone. It's going to be more, not quite as house, corner of the house, corner of the garage like this, it's going to be more parallel with the road.
Okay, do you have a better representation on your print that we could look at, please?
Yes, so let me see here, here's the road. It's not quite so, if you look at that other one, it's turned way more. These are our actual stamped prints.
So the one that's in our packet is not the same as this?
No, it, it goes like this.
Yeah, that one goes like that.
So we can see the proposed building is about the same side yard setback along its entire length, which is quite different than what we were able to look at prior to this.
And... Thanks, can I have it?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And the, the first copy that you guys had, because we were trying to get everything in so we could schedule the variance and get going on this before snow flies, so when we did the final renderings of those drawings, came up with a more, that's accurate, those are. So, yeah, I can see where the confusion would be.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
What was this distance again, 30 feet?
Yep.
30 feet, okay.
I just have a question.
Yep.
Not for you.
Oh.
All right, board, any further questions? Yes, please.
I wanted to point out that the five-foot variance is from the paper road of where it was supposed to be built. It's not from where, way out where the, it was actually built, and I don't know if anybody caught that.
Yeah, we, we actually discussed that at the site plan this, this afternoon, that the road could be literally any place within the easement. So the bottom line, Leslie, is there's going to be approximately, best case, 30 feet of, of space to back up a vehicle before they're encroaching into the roadway.
Exactly.
Okay. So other questions, board? Anything at all?
Just to be clear, the, the updated, for the builder, the updated site plan that we just looked at, the full-size prints, dimensionally, the garage is the same size as what was proposed in the one that we have in our packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there aren't further questions, we might want to look at staff comments, and Please.
I'll make a motion to approve variance 621 as requested. Meets all the basic conditions, and I think it meets all the special conditions, too, but I, I think one is pretty appropriate. And I do think it's safer, like you said, with that garage now, that 30 feet.
Right, and I would like to point out to concerned citizens that having that 30 feet of distance to pull out before they're actually into the roadway is, is a different fact than I was considering tonight at, at the site review, so...
If we had to stake out a builder, we would have known that.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what, yeah, I was saying, that would help a lot.
Yes, and please consider that for future requests. So we have a motion.
Second motion.
Moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to appeal request 7-21 by Kevin Miller, owner on a parcel of land commonly known as Port Travers Condominium Association in the Regional Business District. The appeal is to a decision rendered by the zoning administrator on August 18th, 2021, allowing TC Water Sports to operate as an accessory use per section 221 of the East Bay Township Zoning Ordinance at the Sugar Beach Hotel, 1773 U.S. 31 South, Traverse City, Michigan. Before we hear from the applicant, would you like to set us up for this, Mr. Taylor?
If I may. Staff recommends that due to the amount of information that we've received over the past few days from both sides, that tonight we hear from the applicant as well as comments from the public during the public hearing. It is recommended that interested parties may submit materials for the next 30 days, after which the record on this matter would be closed, with the anticipation and hope that the ZBA would deliberate and come to a conclusion in December, come to a decision in December. Looking around the room, obviously, this is a, is an important topic for a lot of people. I want to give you just a snapshot of a few things, just to kind of set the stage. Although this is very brief, it doesn't mean that the topic at hand is not important, okay? It's very important to both sides. The business in question that we're looking at is an accessory use, is TC Water Sports, specifically doing business at Sugar Beach Hotel. And I can be corrected on this, and I know I will be, but watercraft rentals have taken place at Sugar Beach since the 90s, without me being super detective and looking to do it further, and it would appear TC Water Sports has been renting watercraft at Sugar Beach since roughly 2004. In 2020, the township was approached by representatives of Port Travers who expressed concerns, various concerns regarding business taking place by TC Water Sports at Sugar Beach. Two examples, fueling concerns and accessory stories, but there were other concerns. In the spring of 2021, East Bay Township Board held a bottomlands conveyance to allow for requested, and this was requested by TC Water Sports, dock reconfiguration. Township Board resolution came out of this meeting, capping future use for TC Water Sports at 16 jet skis and 10 boats, which was the 2020 levels of use when the township started receiving complaints about, of TC Water Sports and their concerns. That's not to say that one or two didn't come in before that, but that's when 2020 was notable, the flow of concerns. Complaints and concerns continue to come into the township regarding the township's decision on the intensity of use cap that was permitted for TC Water Sports. This prompted a collective decision to be made by myself and at the direction of Township Council to formalize a decision to consider TC Water Sports to be an accessory use at Sugar Beach. Also, by form, formalizing this decision, it provided an opportunity for the ZBA to give clarity and direction for planning and zoning staff going forward. Our Township Council cannot be here tonight and wanted me to make this point as well, wanted to clarify that also the freezing of the number of boats that took place, putting that cap on the number of jet skis and boats, was to forestall more problems, given that 2020 was the year that complaints regarding TC Water Sports began coming in on a regular basis. So those were the reasons that that letter was generated in August, identifying them as an accessory use. So I have laid the groundwork. We, we had a tremendous amount of correspondence come in in the last week. A lot of that is, is in the packet, some of it has been placed as a hard copy for your Oh, and then also tonight, a young lady provided me with some color copy photos that didn't come through in the email that can be provided at some point for your review.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, is Kevin Miller or his representative available, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Bisdok. I'm here on behalf of Port Travers Condominium Association, who is the appellant. Kevin Miller submitted the appeal on behalf of Port Travers Condominium Association. So the, the association of residents who live next door to this property is who is appealing tonight, and I thank you for hearing us out. I'll step my watch for my 15 minutes in a second. We're appealing the accessory use determination by the zoning administrator. We are appealing the determination, we are not criticizing the work of the zoning administrator. We understand this may have been in some way a negotiated determination with TC Water Sports, however, it still needs to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and Port Travers was not part of any negotiated discussion, and Port Travers is who is directly impacted. I have 2014 is when they began operation, and that is not correct, it was before that. The reference in the zoning administrator's letter of determination is as to an increase in the operation and the number of boats, the size of the facilities, the number of customers since 2014. And so the point of the 2014 is that over that time period, between 2014 and 2020, there's been a large increase in what's going on down there. August 13, the, the staff in the, in the verbal report mentioned Eagle approved a larger dock that is closer to Port Travers than what was there before. And then, and then on August 18, 2021, the determination was made by the zoning administrator that this is an accessory use, as long as the operation is kept at that 2020 level, which again, is much greater than the level only a few years before that. This is a photo of TC Water Sports employees pouring dish soap in the water after a gasoline spill out there. The, the, the gas spills into the water where the Port Travers residents and their kids and their grandkids swim. What is at stake here, I think, is important. We are not asking you to shut this business down. We are not asking you to deny them zoning approval. What we are saying is that the, the, if, if they are an accessory use, they are essentially in a loophole situation where they don't need township site plan approval. They don't need any township approvals. And then furthermore, there's been a decision to essentially grandfather them as of 2020. So we're appealing both of those decisions. The decision that they don't need any actual formal approval from the township, and that they should be grandfathered as of 2020, as opposed to if there's going to be any grandfathering, should be 2015, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a bit. If you grant our appeal, what it means is that TC Water Sports has to follow the same rules as everybody else. It means they have to go through the process, it means they're not above the law. The, the notion that they're sort of in this ever-expanding loophole situation, we believe is a source of a lot of the nuisance impacts and a lot of the nuisance activity on Port Travers, its residents and their guests. This is just sort of an overview, you can see Sugar Beach there, and then you can see the size and relative position of the TC Water Sports operation crammed right up against the boundary line of Port Travers, right? This is not somebody's backyard shed, okay? Like a typical accessory use. This is a very significant and large and substantial operation, and it's shoved over against the boundary line of Port Travers, which is a residential community. The definition of accessory use is what's important here. You have that in the draft findings of fact in your packet from the attorney. I understand some of you are in this business for your day jobs as well, and so bless you for doing this on your evening time as well. I know you're familiar with these standards. It has to constitute, to be an accessory use, it needs to show two things. It needs to constitute only an incidental or insubstantial part of the total activity that takes place at the line. There's a big hotel here, but this is not incidental and insubstantial activity. The size of it is not, and the nature of the activity is not, and it's all right up against the Port Travers residential community. Furthermore, it has to be commonly associated with the principal use and, not or, and integrally related to it. And we submitted some law to you about that, some case law, some definitions. What is integrally related to it mean? You have standards in your ordinance about that. TC Water Sports is not a business that is simply renting kayaks and, and jet skis to the, the, the guests at Sugar Beach. It's renting, it's, it's a business that's existing on Sugar Beach's property, but it's advertising, marketing, renting at other locations besides Sugar Beach. It's not integrally related to Sugar Beach. It's also bringing in other watercraft from other locations. This is the Irish Boat Shop, this is their, their boats at the Irish Boat Shop, that they bring over to Sugar Beach to operate there as well. A separate business that's housed at the Sugar Beach Hotel is not an accessory use of the hotel. That's our point. This is not an accessory use. And then there's a whole nother requirement, which I know you're also familiar with, which is basically about the burden and the impacts of the use. An accessory use shall not generate any effects on neighboring properties, including but not limited to noise, parking, traffic layer, dust, not limited to those, including those, that are greater or more burdensome than the impacts from the main use on the property. Port Travers residents don't complain about guests at Sugar Beach. They don't complain about people staying at Sugar Beach, sitting on the beach at Sugar Beach. They don't have a nuisance problem with Sugar Beach. They have a nuisance problem with, with TC Water Sports, okay? This is a, this is the swim area, you can, you're supposed to use, I guess, this later. Here's the later, right? This is, this is the Port Travers shoreline, right? This is their swim area, this is a pontoon boat coming back to TC Water Sports inside of the swim area for Port Travers, okay? The, the guests at, at Sugar Beach don't come into the nearshore waters of Port Travers. Only the TC Water Sports customers do. This is the pathway along the property line, which is used, these teenagers just carry, carry fuel, right? Along the path, these are all wooden buildings on the Port Travers side, right? And then this is a fuel nozzle dangling in the water at TC Water Sports. They don't have problems like this from Sugar Beach, they only have them from TC Water Sports. It's not an isolated incident. Eagle, 2019, multiple incidents that led to the release of gasoline into Grand Traverse Bay. Sugar Beach isn't doing this, TC Water Sports is. They have trespass issues. So here you've got other hotels that have rental desks for TC Water Sports along the shoreline, and people sign up, and then they say, "Go down there," right? And so people go down across the Port Travers property to get to the rental facility at TC Water Sports. And if the water's low, then they can walk on that beloved Great Lakes bottomland, but if the water's high, they cross onto the Port Travers property, and they walk through the courtyard, or they walk through the grounds, they walk through the parking lot, they find a way to get over, because that's where they're sent to go. People aren't told, "Go out, leave whatever hotel you're at, get in the car, drive out, park at Sugar Beach." They go down, it's down that way, right? So we have an active sort of encouragement of trespassing and crossing. We don't have that from regular guests at Sugar Beach. It's an additional impact, more burdensome than at Sugar Beach. It's an additional impact, more burdensome than at Sugar Beach. So for that reason, it doesn't meet the standard to be integral to, because this is a business that's operated at Sugar Beach, but is operated with other customers and other areas and other locations and other equipment, and we have a burden level that is greater than the burden level they're receiving from Sugar Beach Hotel. They're not here for their health. They're here because they have an ongoing problem, because this use has never been required to go through site plan approval, has never received any of the safeguards and conditions, the regulation that a site that goes through site plan approval receives. Then we get to grandfathering, right? And there's a township attorney opinion letter, Mr. Wendling, I know him, he's very well-respected. I agree with his opinions. I think he did a very good job explaining the whole situation. There's a court of appeals case, the Michigan Supreme Court's hearing arguments about it. It's about the statute of limitations for zoning, right? And the court of appeals said it's six years. And the Supreme Court may say, "We agree it's six years," or they may say, "No, it's not, there is not a statute of limitations for zoning enforcement." We will see what happens there. If it is six years, that's our worst-case scenario, okay? If it's six years, the question is, when are you grandfathering them? If you're grandfathering them based on the statute of limitations, it honestly just makes no sense that you would grandfather them as of what they were doing last year. The township opinion letter, the township attorney opinion letter says expansions within the six years of the statute of limitations are not barred by the statute. They're not grandfathered. And so if you're going to do any grandfathering, if this case is upheld or whatever happens, if you're going to do any grandfathering based on the statute of limitations, it's six years ago. That's what you need to do, 2015, not 2020. Again, we understand there may have been a negotiation about this, but we weren't in the room for that negotiation. We weren't able to present our information, that's why we're presenting it to you. 2020 is not the appropriate year. 2020 is an arbitrary year. It may be what TC Water Sports wanted, but it's not the year that would apply if you're talking about grandfathering based on a statute that's six years long. It would go back to 2015. This is what it looked like in 2015. This is what it looked like last year. It's not only more boats, right? It's bigger structures. It's more structures. It's more activity. They're drawing more customers, right? What we have, I mean, I know the ZVA sometimes deals with nonconforming uses. This is very much like saying, "This is a nonconforming use as of six years ago," and you can't expand a nonconforming use, right? If the question before the ZVA was, "Did this nonconforming use expand in the last six years?" It's not a close call. Obviously, it do. Just to summarize, TC Water Sports is a separate business operating at Sugar Beach. It's not incidental to Sugar Beach. It's not integral to Sugar Beach. It's drawing customers from other hotels. That's not integral to the business of Sugar Beach Hotel. It generates impacts on Port Travers that are more burdensome than the hotel. We went through that. I think you may hear more about that tonight. We appreciate you hearing all of the concerns that people have. It does not qualify for those two reasons as an accessory use under the ordinance. If it's going to be grandfathered, six years, not one year, there's no basis for one year. The statute of limitations, the only basis for grandfathering is six years. Expansions since 2015 are not grandfathered. Granting this appeal, which we would ask you to do, which we would plead for you to do, so we can get some control out there, will not shut down TC Water Sports. It will force TC Water Sports to obtain township approval and follow the same rules as everybody else. And that's all I have for you, unless you have questions. I appreciate you listening and hearing me out. I appreciate your service here.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll see if there are any questions or comments from the public.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Joseph Zaius.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, and if I may make the same statement to everybody in the audience, you'll all have an opportunity to speak, but we need you to step up to the lectern, tell us who you are, where you live, and let us know how you feel.
Hello, as I said, my name is Joseph Zaius. I'm attorney for TC Water Sports, who's the business at issue here. This is Mr. Boyer. He is a member of TC Water Sports. And really, we've seen a lot here today, and I think it's important to clarify what we're here to talk about. We're here to apply the ordinance. We're not here to make policy. We're not here to talk about what happens on the water or environmental concerns, which are dealt with through Eagle. My client works extensively with Eagle, the Coast Guard, the fire department, to make sure the operations at TC Water Sports are safe and those law enforcement agencies address those issues. The issue we're here today to talk about is whether this applies as an accessory use under the East Bay zoning ordinance. And I think when we look at those standards, I really don't think it's a close call. I think it's pretty clear that a motor sport or motor vehicle rental, water vehicle rental business, is an accessory use to a beachfront resort. The two could not be more closely related. So when you look at the definition of near ordinance, and I think, with all due respect to Mr. Bisdok, I think he misspoke on a couple of things with the ordinance. First of all, the ordinance says that it constitutes, that it can either constitute only an incidental or insubstantial part of the total activity that takes place on the lot, or, and this is important, or, is commonly associated with the principal use and integrally related to it. So we don't have to show both of those things. We just have to show one or the other. And your zoning administrator, after the investigation that he's conducted, has determined that it is, that it meets those requirements. So commonly associated, I think, really isn't, is a matter of common sense. A boat rental and a watercraft rental business is going to be associated with a beachfront resort, whether it's in East Bay, Acme, Grand Travers, Elmwood, Riviera, wherever. It's not going to be unusual at all to find that. As far as whether it's integrally related to it or not, we also submitted some case law for you, and in fact, we looked at the same case as Mr. Bisdok did. And I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but when you really look at the case and read the case, what you see is that it has to further the use, is what the cases say. So the question then is, does this use, does TC Water Sports or watercraft rental further a beachfront resort? And I think common sense really tells you that it does. It furthers that business. Customers of Sugar Beach can come over and utilize those services, and they do come over and utilize those services. It furthers their business. These are connected businesses. Now, there are these paragraph two, which does refer to how much burden it puts on, but again, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Bisdok's interpretation here. If you read C, it says, "An accessory use shall not generate any effects or neighboring properties, including but not limited to noise, parking, traffic, glare, or dust, greater than or more burdensome than such impacts from the main use on the property." Now, I think the arguments made by the appellant here interpret this to mean you can't add to the burden. That's not really what it says, because in fact, any additional use is going to add to the burden in some way, shape, or form. That's the nature of land use. What it says is that any accessory use shall not generate any effects on those properties greater than or more burdensome. So the question then, really before both the zoning administrator and further the panel, isn't, does it add a burden? Is a boat rental facility a greater burden than a beach resort? I think it's important to point out, we have a 24-boat or 24-vehicle watercraft, my client is constantly having to correct my language on watercraft, 24 watercraft business here, boat rental business, and we have a 100-unit beach resort. So really, what, to say, you know, which one of those is going to create a greater burden on the neighboring property, again, I don't think it's much of a comparison. When you have 100-unit beach resort, you have, you know, a lot of times you'll have upwards of three, four, or five people in each of those. So when that place is full, we're talking several hundred people easily, walking on the beach, using the, swimming, partying, making, you know, and frankly, that's the purpose of the region we're in, especially that particular district. And I think TC Water Sports, to a large extent, is getting blamed for a lot of the burdens put on there by Sugar Beach. It's been asserted that anyone trespassing over condominium property is going to TC Water Sports. I'm not sure how you can support that assertion. I'm not sure that can be supported by any reliable, logical evidence. In fact, I'm not sure you can even connect that directly to Sugar Beach. So the question then is, and I really think it's a fairly clear analysis, is, is the 100-unit resort a greater or lesser burden than a 24-boat rental facility? And if it is, if you decide that that is, that creates more noise, traffic, et cetera, then this qualifies as an accessory use, and you can't disqualify it based on that provision C there. And while there's been a lot of assertions brought up throughout this and a lot of accusations, and I understand people's concerns, but the role we're here today to play is whether or not this ordinance, whether or not that definition of accessory use applies. And I think under that analysis is pretty clear it does. Now, the argument's been made that just that because outside people come in, it can't be an accessory use. That analysis is not supported by any cited law. And again, I'm not going to get too far into the weeds as to what the cases say, but I did put it in my memo, but they do not support the assertion that just because you get outside, just because you get outside customers, you can't be an accessory use. And I think if you look at, for example, a restaurant or a bar or something you normally see as an accessory use in a hotel, of course, they get outside customers. That's the nature of it. So applying this ordinance and applying the standards within your own ordinance, I think it's pretty clear that TC Water Sports fits into an accessory use, which is really the sole question that we're here today to talk about. I would like to speak just briefly on the grandfathering issue. What the Frazier case says is the statute of limitations on enforcement issue. So Frazier, without going too far into it, essentially dealt with a pig farm. After six years, the township decided to want to stop this pig farm. Court of Appeals says, "No, you can't do that at this point because it's been going on for more than six years." And the key thing about that decision wasn't what the statute of limitations was, it was when the statute of limitations started. And what they actually say is the statute of limitation starts when the use starts. But that's really an issue that would be dealt with four steps down the road should East Bay Township ever come to try to enforce an ordinance or some sort of violation on TC Water Sports. We're not there yet. We're not even close to there yet, and frankly, I really hope we never get there, because that means something is broken down along the way. My understanding of the baseline is, is from reading the zoning administrator's opinion, what he's trying to do is say, "Look, at what point doesn't it become, is it too big to be an accessory use any longer?" And he took the point where, in 2020, where he started getting complaints. Now, I also note that a lot of these complaints occurred during the COVID year when people were looking for outdoor uses. So did a lot more people come to try to rent boats during 2020? Yeah, they did. And we've, but being a successful business has never been a disqualifying factor. Our number of boats have stayed the same from 2015 until today. It's 24, or number of watercraft, I should say. It's 24. That's the limit that was put on by Eagle. The zoning administrator has given us permission for 26, and yeah, it's fine. But there's been no expansion of those number of boats, and you can't take a snapshot in time and say, "Look how many boats are on the dock on such and such date." Clearly, they're expanded, because when I come back on such and such date, there's more boats there. It was 24 boats in 2015. It's 24 boats now. So that's really the issue with the baseline. It kind of blurs it when you say that it's a grandfathering issue. It's not. It's trying to determine at what point this becomes too big to be an accessory use. The grandfathering issue is something totally different. That's an enforcement issue that will be brought up in court, you know, five steps down the road, should this ever get that far? Hopefully, it never does, and we never have to worry about it. So I would encourage this panel, without belaboring the point too much, to concentrate its analysis on that question, on those issues. Is this an accessory use? And I would also encourage this panel to look at matters within its enforcement authority in that, what we're really looking at here is the use of the land. So, you know, we do our best to deal with the fire chase, and we do our best to deal with Eagle, and we have. We absolutely have worked with them to cure any issues that have come up. But this panel's job isn't water law enforcement. It's land use. And the question before the panel, respectfully, is whether this meets that accessory use. And I'm confident that you'll go through that analysis. I know you're familiar with those. I appreciate your time in doing this. I know this isn't your main career. You take a lot of time, and we certainly appreciate that. That's all I have, unless there are questions from me or Mr. Boyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this issue?
I appreciate your time. My name is Magdalena Paddock. I've been a co-owner at Port Travers since the mid-'80s. So I have seen the commercial changes that have taken place. In fact, I remember when Sugar Beach was a mom-and-pop motel. We've seen the changes that have occurred with the commercial land. We have large hotels next door to us, but I can unequivocally state that having TC Water Sports on our property boundary line is more burdensome than having 100 or possibly even 200-room hotel. But the main point I would like to make today is the great expansion that TC Water Sports has made over the past several years, primarily from about 2015 on. That includes a whole fleet of motorized watercraft and personal watercraft, an extensive dock, two satellite locations that are located down the beach, you know, not quite a mile away, and then they're anticipating a third satellite location at the Irish Boat Shop. It's obvious that they run a good business, and they're interested in expanding their business. Their target consumer isn't just no longer the people at Sugar Beach that reside there. It is, I believe, they want to be the largest watercraft rental operation on East Bay. And if I were owning something like that, I'd want that too. But I think their target audience and the burden that they provide or the effect that they have on Port Travers does not qualify them for accessory use. I thank you for taking your time to listen to us today.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
Good evening. My name is Doug Crim. My wife, Bonnie, and I are, live at Port Travers condos. I believe there's no question that the TC Water Sports boat rental business does not meet the definition of an accessory use under the township's zoning ordinance. TC Water Sports boat rental business clearly is a standalone business. It operates from several locations, has many employees, has many boats, many jet skis, and many kayaks. It uses substantial amounts of gasoline and draws throngs of customers to the Sugar Beach hut and docks. People from all over the Travers city area come to the boat rental business's hut next to Port Travers condos. With the amount of activity I saw this summer, it appeared that the hotel was actually the accessory use to the TC Water Sports large boat rental business. I won't restate all of the negative impacts to Port Travers residents from the boat rental business. Others have submitted statements and have addressed this board with details relating to the boat rental operations, meaning-- to the boat rental operations, meaning negative impacts. Port Travers Legal Counsel, Mr. Bizdok, had a presentation and has submitted a memorandum to this board that provides both the facts and the law as to why the boat rental business is not an accessory use under the township's zoning ordinance. There is simply no question that the large boat rental operation causes negative impacts to the Port Travers residents that are more burdensome than the normal impacts a hotel operation would have. Therefore, the boat rental business does not meet the zoning ordinance's definition of an accessory use. What I would like to share with the board is Port Travers' resolve, resolve in contesting the accessory use determination. We sincerely hope that this board will reconsider, and in light of the additional information provided, reverse the decision that TC Water Sports boat rental business is an accessory use under the township's zoning ordinance. If, however, the accessory use determination cannot be corrected at this point in the process, Port Travers will have no choice but to appeal to State Circuit Court. We will do this because our children and grandchildren play on the beach and swim in the water next to the large boat rental operation. We strongly believe that a circuit court judge will find that the boat rental business does not meet the zoning ordinance's accessory use definition. A circuit court appeal will take time, effort, and significant cost. Port Travers is willing to put forth a substantial effort to correct the accessory use determination. Port Travers will do this because we live there and have to endure all of the negative impacts associated with this large boat rental business. Mr. Miller, who brought this appeal, and I are both Port Travers residents and lawyers. We will be working on behalf of Port Travers. Mr. Bizdok from the firm of Olson, Bizdok &amp; Howard is an expert in the area of the law at issue. He and his firm's expertise will continue to be used in Port Travers' efforts to correct the accessory use determination. We sincerely hope that both Port Travers and East Bay Township can avoid the time, effort, and significant cost of a circuit court appeal, which we strongly believe will ultimately result in a circuit court judge ruling that the large boat rental operation is not an accessory use under the township's zoning ordinance. My wife Bonnie and I request that the board reconsider, and in light of the additional information provided, reverse the determination that the TC Water Sports boat rental business is an accessory use to the Sugar Beach Hotel. Thank you all for your service and the opportunity to address.
Thank you. Would another person care to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Moring, and I am the owner of Port Travers Unit Number Eight. And if you have Exhibit I, Page One, I don't have it on the screen, but I am the owner of the condo, which is the closest condo to the water. And since the water has come up substantially, my patio is about 15 feet from my condo. 15 feet beyond that are people walking back and forth without regard to my patio, my furniture, and my family who is sitting there, okay? Normal people will walk at water's edge. You can bring 300 of them down there to walk from Sugar Beach, and we don't care. They are respectful enough to walk on the water edge. The people who come from Grand Beach over to Sugar Beach have no concern about me, my family, or my grandchildren who are in the water with a jet ski. The people who rent jet skis have no regard for the mechanical part of it. All they're interested in is going as fast as it can go. My children, my grandchildren, use the jet ski, and it is a very scary situation when you have six or eight jet skis running at full tilt back and forth in the waters that we use also. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Irene Brown, and I've done for Travers for 37 years. And I've looked at a few people. I know you've all been around quite a while, too, so the changes that have come in Grand Travers community, not just to affect the city itself, but the venue at this time. And I have observed the TC Water Sports operation for many of these years. This business has, over the years, adversely impacted my fall of faith as a resident at Port Travers as it has evolved. The noise alone from over 20 motor boats and jet skis is most unpleasant. In addition, we're constantly worried about the hazards generated by the TC Water Sports daily transportation of hundreds of gallons of gasoline on a narrow dirt path with a few feet between this and Woodley Ranches. I thought that was shown here, was very evident of what has occurred on the property line with TC Water Sports. There have also been a significant number of gas spills at the TC Water Sports shops that have endangered Port Travers residents and their guests, including children and grandchildren, and have resulted in pervasive orders from the heating and parking lot, courtyard, and some locations of residences. I have seen customers of TC Water Sports park in our parking lot because of inadequate parking in Sugar Beach. This used to be a small boat operation, very tolerable to live next to them when the people would come to Sugar Beach to enjoy a stay. However, I have no statistic or no proof of this, but most of the people that use Waterpeace Sports facilities are not guests of that hotel. They do not come there and stay overnight and bring their family. They come to that area for one reason, one reason only, and that's to use the equipment that TC Water Sports affords them to use on our bay. In the meantime, over all the years, the small boat rental operation of one time has become an enormous commercial marina. Please be careful in your speaking and the vibration and determination of the Township's Planning and Zoning Department that TC Water Sports is an accessory use. Thank you for being volunteers and serving on boards. It's not always a pleasant show. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Reiser. My wife and I are new residents to Port Travers. As I became aware of this issue at the first price, I began looking up regulations relating to fuel transportation, and I really can't zero in on any, but it's ridiculous, the amount of fuel that's coming right down my garage. When they've got many hundreds of feet, they could be moving that fuel to the property. So, I'm concerned about that, and I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Sally Samsal.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'm going to wait until other people have spoken.
It is. Who would like to speak next?
Hello, I'm Tina Powers, and I own Unit Number 25 at Port Travers Condominiums, and I would like to give my time to Sally Samsal.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else want to be?
My name is Alice. Hi, I've been at Port Travers for seven years, and I've been in the area for four years with the hospital all those years and all. And when I moved into Port Travers seven years ago, I could look out my unit, and it's closer to Grand Beach, and I would see the water. And now what I see for the last four years are two pontoon boats parked in front for every time that I look out there. Just is, it's just not what I planned when I moved there. It's all into that stuff. I've also been exposed to the loud noises when the young people bring in the boats in the evening, the radios up all the way, and you can hear it inside the house. The same thing with the couple of gasoline spills. I was the one that caused that. I had to aim twice on that, because nothing was being done, and I could smell gasoline, and I'm at the other end of the property. So, I'd like to give the rest of my time to Sally Samsal.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Claire Wilts, and I've been a resident at Port Travers Condominiums for nine years. During that time, I have witnessed TC Water Sports grow from a small operation renting a handful of watercraft, mostly to guests of the hotel, to a business that rents at least 20 pontoon boats and jet skis and operates a parasail boat that services the entire Traverse City tourism market. The business is widely advertised on signs and banners up and down the Route 31 Strip and throughout Traverse City, tourism literature, and social media, and generates hundreds of customers a day. I believe that TC Water Sports no longer meets any accepted criteria for an accessory use. This is not like a hotel restaurant that is open to the public. This is more like a McDonald's restaurant, except the customers aren't sitting down and eating hamburgers. They are renting jet skis, and it is located right on the property line of Port Travers, a residential community with 35 units. The impact of the operation of TC Water Sports on its neighbors cannot be compared to the impact of the hotel operation. The noise impacts of 14 jet skis coming and going 12 hours a day is exponentially greater than the noise generated by hotel guests sitting on a beach or congregating on their balconies. Port Travers now shares a waterfront with a virtual marina. There is no such thing as a quiet time on the beach during daylight hours in the summer. Apart from the impact of the operation of the watercraft, we are constantly bombarded with the noise of large groups of customers waiting to rent or board their boats. As has already been noted, we also experience safety issues from novices operating the rental watercraft and environmental pollution from careless refueling procedures. The operation of the hotel presents none of these impacts. I respectfully request that the board acknowledges the operation of TC Water Sports at its current size no longer constitutes an accessory use to the hotel as anticipated by the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Chesney. I'm actually Unit Number 21 over at Port Travers. My family's been a part of Port Travers several times, once from 2002 to 2008. The issue regarding the complaints for TC Water Sports have gone on much longer than the ones in 2020, as acknowledged. They started with my parents and ourselves and our family back in the 2000s from the amount of traffic and noise that we had to endure with the individuals that continually come across. I also got the unique experience this past year of actually staying at the Sugar Beach and having all of the traffic from outside of the resort parking itself directly in front of the unit that I rented there at the time, that was coming in to actually rent boats and utilize TC Water Sports, if you will, weren't guests of the hotel. These were individuals who came in from outside of the area and decided to sit directly in front of where we were actually renting at in a space that was actually part of the unit we were renting. This didn't happen once, didn't happen twice, this happened probably two dozen times throughout our stay while we were there. And so, again, accessory, I just, it's not that same. I don't see it as the same thing. The other challenge that's been brought up, I know, is surrounding the gas dock. For my family and my small children that are swimming in the lake, I'm extremely concerned about that, and I don't understand how that has gotten to where we are, where they're able to basically have a transient marina with a gas dock that's operating there. I don't know if that's been looked at or at what level the EPA or DNR or really anyone has said it's okay to go ahead and utilize that gas. For me, having my kids swimming in the bay, I wouldn't want them around it, because, again, you're not talking about somebody carrying a five-gallon container. You've got multiple containers of gasoline. You've seen the photos in what's been provided. So, I would just ask you to reconsider whether or not this is considered an accessory use to that hotel or not, because, again, I think it's grown much bigger than where it was. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Kevin Miller. I'm the person who signed the application for appeal as agent and representative of Port Travers. I'm going to make some personal comments as a resident of Port Travers, if that's okay.
Yes.
I've been living with this issue for a long time. I've lived here since, at Port Travers, since 2012. With all due respect to Preston, this is not an issue that we raised for the first time in 2020. I have been writing emails to East Bay Township Zoning Department, Leslie Perrier, since at least 2016. Frankly, I can go all the way back. I'm not even sure. I have the hard drives still working from further back than that. And I specifically recall a response from Leslie in which she said that a majority of the customers at TC Water Sports are from the Grand Beach Hotel and Sugar Beach Hotel. I didn't agree with that, but what I found interesting about that was the acknowledgement that Grand Beach was an integral part of their customer base. That's not the property. It's Sugar Beach. And once you bring Grand Beach in, you're not really talking about an accessory use anymore. As other people have commented, 24 internal combustion engines on your property line operating throughout the day is much more burdensome than a hotel restaurant, which is typically located in the hotel. Maybe it's got a patio adjacent to the hotel. The reality is, we don't mind the noise from Sugar Beach hotel guests, their kids, their grandkids. In fact, that's the type of noise we relish, because our kids and grandkids are making the same noise on our beach. What we don't like is the noise from all these motorized watercraft directly on our property line. And we try to be good citizens. We have not, you know, been out of control in terms of our complaints, and frankly, I don't understand the logic of the 2020 baseline. If you choose 2020 when the claim is that's when the complaints first started coming in, there's already a problem. You don't memorialize the problem by setting that date as the baseline. It just doesn't make any sense. The other thing I would like to say is that my recollection, well, I'd like to go back, as Preston referenced at the beginning of his summary, the March 8th of East Bay Township Board meeting in which a bottomlands conveyance resolution was adopted. And he said that that resolution kept the intensity of use. It didn't. The resolution, if you look at the March 8th minutes, the resolution itself says they're approving the application for a bottomlands conveyance of specific map coordinates, you know, x degrees north, 40 feet east, whatever. That's the resolution. There's some other language that's preambled, that's whereas clauses. That's the resolution. The resolution only went to the dimensions of the bottomlands conveyance. And that bottomlands conveyance doesn't work anymore. You heard that they received an Eagle permit at the beginning of August, or August 13th. The bottomlands required for that new, that granted permit, much larger than the bottomlands resolution in March 8th. The March 8th resolution contemplated a bottomlands conveyance that's 96 feet wide at the north end. The bottomlands conveyance on the dock permit granted by Eagle, 256 feet. So, whatever resolution was adopted in March 8th, really, it's a nullity at this stage because it doesn't match up with what Eagle approved in August. We unfortunately weren't given notice of that March 8th, didn't have an opportunity to appear and raise issues at that meeting. We've been playing catch-up ever since. As Chris said, we're not trying to put them out of business. We do think that the limitation that was in the prior East Bay Township Board resolution was appropriate. The East Bay Township Bottomlands Conveyance- The East Bay Township Bottomlands Conveyance Resolution prior to this year was from 2007 and it said, in the resolution, not whereas, not preamble, in the resolution, it said it can't be used for, it can only be used by residents and guests of Sugar Beach and not for any other commercial purpose. That got dropped out of the Bottomlands Conveyance Resolution in March. Why did it get dropped out of? I believe as Claire Connor represented at that meeting, the resolution, including the whereas clauses, were drafted in consultation with TC Water Sports. Again, we were not a party to that discussion. We didn't have an opportunity. And it was not necessary to the resolution that was required for Eagle purposes. The other thing that I would like to say is I believe at that March 8th meeting, Claire also said that they discussed with TC Water Sports the possibility of seeking site plan review, and they preferred to move forward as an accessory use. So this is not a situation where people are surprised and then with the notion of maybe a site plan review is more appropriate. They made a conscious choice not to pursue a site plan review. And, you know, we're just trying to say, look, we try to be patient. We try to be good citizens. We tried to raise this at appropriate times. Frankly, we couldn't bring an appeal sooner, I don't think, because we hadn't exhausted our remedies with the township until they finally wrote the letter. Why did they write that letter? Because we asked the Board to reconsider the March 8th resolution. Instead of reconsidering it, we get a determination letter saying that the zoning, Huntington Zoning Department has decided it's an accessory use. Well, you know, we disagreed, but thank you. You gave us a trigger for being able to come to this body and say, please do the right thing. You don't have to be, you know, there's a lot of accusations, allegations going around. We provided pictures. We provided picture aerial photographs from Michigan State University, which I believe are sourced to U.S. Department of Agriculture satellite images. And if you look at the image of 2015, oh, 16, because we didn't have every year, 2016 as a proxy for 2015, because this thing's only grown bigger. You look at the satellite image of 2016 that we provided, there's no way they had 24 boats there. There were hoists for six boats and five jet skis. And if they had more boats than that, they were bringing them in from somewhere else and they weren't readily apparent. I don't know how they came up with the notion that they've had 24 boats since 2015, but we've got satellite images and a photograph of the dock in 2016 showing a much smaller dock configuration. And I don't understand why the cap in the determination letter is even higher than what they say they've been operating, even though it reported it'll only go back to 2020. If you're going to allow them to move forward, I would ask that you consider putting critical limitations on their business. And I believe the ability to put limitations on their business has effectively been acknowledged by the fact that the 2007 East Bay Township Board Resolution said that it could only be used by hotel residents and guests. That's a use limitation. Presumably, the township believed it had the authority to put that type of use limitation on it. We would like to see something like that or similar, obviously. The second thing I would say is the determination letter written in August puts a cap on the intensity of use based on the number of boats. Again, an acknowledgement that the township has authority to put those types of limitations in place. What are the types of limitations that are most important to me? Intensity of use, number of watercraft. As Chris said, take them back to 2015. You know, we're not trying to put them out of business. That's a significant haircut. It would alleviate a lot of the burden on Port Travers. And, you know, it would make us feel a lot more comfortable. Second thing is, if you're going to do that, be very careful, because they bring in watercraft from other locations. They moored offshore at the Baywatch Hotel, the Grand Beach Hotel, the Irish Boat Shop last year, which they are apparently buying and have applied for site plan permission to put in a marina equal in size to what they've got at Sugar Beach. All right, it's gonna be, it's actually gonna be, I believe, slightly bigger. So for an intensity of use limitation to be effective, you've got to prohibit the importation of boats from moored at other places. Otherwise, there's an easy end run, which they've been utilizing through several years. Second thing is, the 2007 dock permit, which is the one prior to what they got this year, had the main north-south dock 83 feet from our property line. What they applied for with Eagle and what Eagle granted in August allows them to move that dock to 43 feet from our property line, 40 feet closer. And the combination of 24 internal combustion engines being 40 feet closer to our property line exacerbates what was already a horrendous situation. So one of the other things that's important to us is distance from the property line. You know, again, would we like it to be the other side of the property, 100 feet from our property line? Yes, but 83 feet should be the minimum because that's historically where it was always at. That's where it was this summer. Giving them 40 feet closer undermines a lot of potential benefits. I guess the last thing that I would say is, there's got to be a better solution to the transportation of all that gasoline right down our property line. If it's not, I mean, and I think the issue is not whether the fire department signs off on it, it complies with law. Frankly, I don't think it can. I don't think the Department of Transportation allows you to transport that much gasoline in a trailer that's not marked or licensed. I don't think you're allowed to put it in a parking lot that's not marked or licensed. I know that the site plan review down at the Irish Boat Shop is required a barrier and 20 feet setbacks. Those are all important. Those are all legal issues. The question for purposes of accessory use isn't more burdensome. As I think Claire pointed out, there is no hazardous, you know, fuel storage transportation by the hotel as a hotel. The only hazardous transportation right next to our wooden garages, and I would also say, right next to one of their hotel units, all that gasoline going, I mean, I just can't imagine anybody would want to, on a daily basis, to live, sleep that close to that much gasoline. It's just an incredible amount of gasoline. There's gotta be a better way than to move it down a narrow dirt path between wooden buildings next to where people sleep and reside. As everybody else has said, I, you know, I am grateful for your volunteer efforts, thankful for your time. I hope, you know, I hope you'll give, do consideration and we look forward to your answers. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you all. My name is Savary Ware. I'm a representative of the applicant TC Water Sports. I'm a partner in the business and I want to thank you all on the panel and I want to thank all of you for your comments tonight. I know this is a, is a hotly contested issue and I just wanted to start by saying that, you know, I'm here in a couple different capacities. I'm here as a business owner, but I'm also here as a person. And as a person, I have a tremendous amount of compassion for the concerns that have been raised tonight and, and desire genuinely to resolve. There have been numerous efforts made to attempt to have healthy, respectful resolution outside of the appeals process, outside of our dock permit process. And unfortunately, that has, has not been very well received, but I, I do, I feel for anybody who lives in a home that is adjacent to this. I owned a building downtown Traverse City, restored a cool old historic building. I happen to live upstairs. We had a restaurant downstairs. It was my dream home in every way imaginable. It was the place I wanted to live for the rest of my life until I accepted this difficult reality that I was living directly above a restaurant. And it was extremely hard for me to get to that point because I put my passion and my joy into it. It was a communal place that my family enjoyed and I hear a lot of the comments tonight about that. And I'm hearing those, really, I am, I'm hearing those concerns. But what I came to the conclusion of was that I was, I was a condo owner in a building that had a restaurant. And I could either choose to accept that I lived in the designated downtown area in the bar district of all places and that I wasn't likely going to change the character of the neighborhood to being a purely residential neighborhood, or I could sell and move. And as difficult as it was for me, I chose to sell and move. I'm not saying that that's anything that anyone else should do, but that was the choice that I made at that time. What we're really talking about here is the Regional Business District to what is the largest tourism driver in the Midwest in Traverse City. And sometimes I'm thankful for that because it pays for my daughter's meals, it pays for my house. I'm also compassionate to the effects of that and that it comes with certain challenges, including noise, including traffic. So finding a healthy middle ground and a way to respect my neighbors, my community, my staff, our relationships with the hotel, this has been extraordinarily difficult to navigate. And it hasn't been without stress. It's been a very, very difficult thing to deal with financially, as a business, and also just personal stress. But we're talking about the Regional Business District and it was designed to be the hub of commercial activity, including and especially for tourism and not just to service our area, but to bring people from outside of this area to this town. So we are an amenity to a hotel that helps to attract those people. Now, Traverse City's home, it's where I grew up. It's been my home for my entire life, save the first five years of my life. I've also had, I've had the benefit of living in a lot of other places and working in a lot of other places, from Naples, Florida, to St. Thomas, the Dominican Republic, Colombia, all over Florida, pretty much every coastal town, from Sarasota down to Marco Island and from Pensacola, Orange Beach, Alabama, North Carolina. My use is virtually identical to every single place I've worked at, over 300 different properties that had accessory use, boat rentals, or water sports, or tour businesses that are related. It's so common, it's so common that I don't see how you could possibly separate the two. Outside of, outside of East Bay Township, at the Delamar Resort Downtown, there are approximately six accessory businesses of similar size to ours. Nautica, the new sailboat that came in, Sunset Water Sports, Yen Yoga, a bar, a Michelin Star Restaurant. All of those businesses, I can guarantee you rely on businesses that come from outside of the Delamar Resort, every single one. None of them would be a sustainable business model if they couldn't allow people to come in from off their property. I'm going to try not to get too into the details here, but there are a couple of things that I think are really important for me to point out. One is the size of our business. I have not, I have not had a chance to read any specific ordinance about the number of customers that you're allowed to serve, number of people on the property at a time, number of bathrooms, number of parking spots, all those things. But how successful you are or not, I have never seen anything that has specifically addressed that in the code. The size of our fleet that we have rented from TC Water Sports has remained the same since 2015, contrary to what's been said here tonight by the opposition and contrary to some of the assertions that were made by the zoning administrator. We've maintained the same size fleet. What we have changed, we've reconfigured the dock, we've had more customers. At times, that's something I've been really thankful and at other times like this last year, I haven't really been. It's been so stressful that I have actually closed the parasail business that I've had for 25 years on this bay because I thought that the additional customers added more stress than I was willing to take on. So if you're 25 years of doing business, I had multiple suitors who wanted to buy my business and I said, no, I don't want to, I don't want to choose the money. I want to increase opportunity for peace by decreasing traffic. That was a very difficult decision to make after 25 years of doing something for a living that I really care about. There are some other issues that are related to the dock configuration that I think are important to point out. The water levels have been changing and you guys are all aware of this. We didn't just have one natural disaster last year. We had two. We had the pandemic, which is unprecedented times for all of us. And leading up until the summer, we didn't even know if we were going to be able to be in business at all, let alone what was going to be entailed in order to operate that business in a safe, effective manner. Social distancing, we didn't even know until July if we were allowed to operate outdoors as a business without masks and social distancing. So a lot of the pictures and things that we're seeing are references to things that we did in response to the pandemic to try and be more responsible, more safe. Dock loading platforms that allowed more intentionality behind the way that we fuel so that we have more space for people to walk up and down the dock without bumping into a fuel container while we're using it to fuel a boat. It wasn't about, everything we did was not purely driven by how can we make more money? It was how can we operate a business more responsibly, more effectively, more respectfully to our neighbors with a lower impact or with a more reasonable impact? But we're talking, I've heard a lot of people come up here tonight and talk about whether or not we're a marina. According to the Planning Commission, they've determined that we are a use similar to a marina and that that is a use by right. Within the, within the Regional Business District, we're talking about this is something that you guys have established as a use by right formally. Okay? I think that's a really important point. With regard to the dock, yes, it's changed. I'm not going to say that it didn't. And it wasn't just in response to the pandemic. It was also in response to the eight-year period where we experienced the lowest water levels in 100 years and the highest water levels in 100 years. And it's almost impossible, it's almost impossible to adjust to that on an annual basis because there's such dramatic shift only a few years apart. If you guys came out to our beach in 2012, you'd see that there was approximately 100 feet of beach in front of our booth. 100 feet of beach, 100 feet of beach by whatever the width of our beach is was a significant amount of space for our customers to congregate, for people to pitch up an umbrella or a chair or hang out on the beach. And if you move that water level up closer to the shore, it really just squeezed everybody in. And not just our customers, the customers of the hotel, the people who walk up and down the beach, which I assure you are not just Sugar Beach customers, they're not just TC Water Sports customers. They're people who live and own properties along that stretch. They're people from all of the other hotels that come and go. And there are people who access the public waters and the public crust bottomlands from public parks, public parking lots, state parks. And there's been nothing that I've heard tonight that has identified that those are my customers. People are using the waters. If there's ever an issue, I will, every single time, I will respond to it as quickly and responsibly as I possibly can. If, if there was an issue of trespassing, I would deal with it. I haven't heard any of those issues brought to me. In 25 years I've been doing this, never once have I had one of those issues brought to me. And on the dock permit, we've heard some conversations about the bottomlands conveyance. It might not surprise you, or it might surprise you all to know that we were one of two docks on East Bay at a commercial location that were compliant with their dock permit this year. Two, out of the entire stretch. When I told that to the Eagle representative, he said, I'm not in the least bit surprised. I said, what type of compliance do you experience statewide? He said, less than 10%. So does that, does that change what's happened? No. We were compliant this year. We've made a tremendous effort to be compliant moving forward. We've gone through extraordinary lengths and costs and efforts to be compliant and to get a conveyance that gave us the space to know that we can honestly be compliant. We didn't realize that if you change your dock configuration, even if it's 5%, and you move any finger dock outside of your bottomlands conveyance, that you're no longer compliant. Meaning, nobody on East Bay is compliant. Nobody, including Port Travers. Okay? Meaning, nobody on East Bay is compliant, nobody, including Port Travers, okay? Including Port Travers. So you hear these numbers thrown out there like, these guys are asking for so much more? It's the only way that we knew that we could have integrity to being compliant. I really, I really just wanted to say this. I appreciate the concerns, I want to do everything and anything I can humanly possible to deal with those concerns and to limit any potential negative impact that I have, or that my business has on my neighbors. But there's a striking contrast between operating a business that has an impact on a neighboring property from our property, and operating boats that are on the public trust bottomlands that anybody and everybody has an equal and shared right to use. Boats being out on the water, whether they're rented or not, are outside of the scope of our discussion here tonight. These boats, anybody can go to the public boat ramp just down the road and launch a boat and use it. And so if there's noise, I hope it's not my customers. If it's my customers, I want to do something about it. But there's no way for us to know where those are coming from, those are public uses, they're capable of public uses. So I would just really like us to focus in on, are we an accessory use or not? Are we creating a greater impact than the hotel? Common sense would tell me that three, four, 500 people having beach parties all day, the entire day, is going to have a significantly higher impact than customers of mine who show up for about five to 10 minutes before their boat rental, maybe 15 minutes if they're dragging their feet. They use the bathroom, they sign up, they fill out the paperwork, and they go out on the water. And so are we really talking about the impact of a person out on the water in public trust affecting them, or are we talking about the use of this property? I don't know how somebody who's at the hotel for 15 minutes can have more impact than somebody who's there for eight hours. I don't know how a couple dozen people there for 15 minutes at a time can have more impact than a few hundred people there for several hours at a time. Common sense tells me that people throwing parties on the beach and people having a good time, it's going to have a greater impact. And that's really what we're comparing here is, are we a greater impact than the hotel? Not, do we add to it? Because as Joe pointed out earlier, any business of any kind, whether inside or outside, is automatically going to have some impact. Even if it's a restaurant inside, we're talking parking, right? We're talking traffic. Those are impacts, right? We're not talking about, are we adding an impact? We're talking about, are we a greater impact than the hotel that's for sale for $47 million? I can tell you right now, I don't make that kind of money. I don't know that my business could possibly generate even a fraction of the impact that that business does. I thank you for your time, I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of all these issues. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Doug Dapinski, I've been a resident at Port Travers for 25 years. I have to say, I'm disappointed when I read the agenda, I came up from Grand Rapids, and I thought you guys were going to rule on this tonight, according to the agenda, you're going to make a determination. At 4:30, I was driving up, I got the email that said it's going to be delayed, but I accept that. What I want to state is, so Ferrari said that he's trying to reach out to people from Port Travers, and it's been ineffective. I worked with the Township trustee, along with Kevin Miller, and that person was trying to mediate a meeting between us via text, conversations with him, and it never happened. And it wasn't on Port Travers' part, it was on their part. We tried to resolve this verbally, we've been working on this for a long time, this is the last thing we wanted to happen, we could resolve it verbally. And I will say one other thing, he might have been compliant in his dock this year, one of two people on the East Bay, he was compliant to the 2007 permit, because that's what he was put up this year. Is that what you were compliant to, Swire, your 2007 permit?
Sir, please address the board.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm facts. So he was compliant to the 2007 permit, so remember that when you put your term of limitations together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, all of you. My name is Sally Samsel. I want to thank you all for holding this appeal hearing tonight for Port Travers. I am president of the Port Travers condominium association. A township has authority to enact zoning ordinances and enforce them, but you all know this. Zoning is accomplished by regulations that provide for, among other things, public health, safety, and welfare purposes, for the protection from nuisances by creating compatibility between neighboring land uses, by limiting incompatible, I can't say, incompatible neighboring uses, and property values are also protected. We appreciate that. The Sugar Beach Resort and Villas have a specific zoning for the property located at 1773 US 31 North. It is not zoned for a commercial waterfront business offering, ten to 12 hours per day of watercraft rental to the general public. TC Water Sports is a standalone business and not an accessory business to the hotel. Actions taken have consequences, be they negative or positive. If a homeowner or business owner violates zoning regulations, the owner suffers the consequences if they do not follow the rules, just as people who live in a condominium develop and about rules. Just because items are in the name of Sugar Beach Resort permits, resolutions, TC Water Sports has violated these zoning rules for many years, including items spelled out in the East Bay Resolution 2007-4, as well as permits from Eagle and the Army Corps of Engineers issued in 2007. I also had in my notes here that I made about four boats and four jet skis, and that they had to become compliant because they were forced to by the Army Corps of Engineers and go back to the 2007 permit. This room is 40 feet in length, so let's double that and say it's 80 feet. The dock for 2007 permits is to be 83 feet from the property line. On the other side of the room, 83 feet away, so from there to there, is the dock platform. It's supposed to be four feet wide, but that has changed in many areas over the years, especially in the years 2019 into 2020, when the finger piers were 12 feet wide and extended almost to the property line. We started at 83 feet, but when you start bending and angling dock platforms, you become closer and closer. And when you extend them out from your original permit, it also becomes closer and closer. It's supposed to be a four-foot wide main dock area, but that, again, has changed, but the main dock pier in most instances is four feet, it's the finger piers that keep adding on. Now imagine this is your backyard, and all of this is happening next door. The check-in booth, office, whatever you want to call it, is right next to our property line. Your decker patio is almost on the east side of the property boundary, so that's where you're sitting enjoying your iced tea. Over the years, the noise of the people has increased, the noise from the added watercraft has increased. There are gas spills, there are odors that hang in the air, you now have to abandon your patio or deck until the smells dissipate. People park in our parking lot, they cut across our property line to get the business in front of the, to get to the business in front of the Sugar Beach, with their coolers and boat bags. That's how we know, when they come on our property, they're going to TC Water Sports. And we have people that follow them out there. We had one couple who just moved because they were tired of people coming and parking in our parking lot. They didn't feel they could even leave the garage door open because people were looking in there, walking by, they felt threatened. All right, now TC Water Sports plans to move the dock 40 feet closer to the west property boundary, and move the watercraft machinery off the west side of the dock to join with the equipment already on the east side of the dock. 40 feet, so let's cut the room in half. We're still on the 83 feet portion of it, but they have now moved the dock 40 feet. So it's now in the center of the room. It's attached to the land, everything is originating from the land, going out to the water, but it's attached to the land. So now the noise of 24 engines moves closer to the Port Travers area, along with the people noise, and don't forget the gasoline spills move closer as well. Now, to be fair, let's use 40 feet as the distance a dock will be from our property boundary. So the wall has now gone back to its 40 feet, so 40 feet from there to 40 feet to there. That's how far away their dock is going to be from our property line. We've got building number three that is probably 10 feet from the property line, there's a walkway, we have a fence, their business is on the other side of that fence. What also worries us is the continuous bringing in of other boats from down the beach. They have already been using the Irish Boat Shop, which you heard about, Baywatch Hotel, and the Grand Beach Resort for anchorage. And then they bring the six boats and numerous jet skis to the dock at Sugar Beach throughout the day to serve their customers, more customers, more people congregating. TC Water Sports does not have enough space available on land for their customers to gather and wait in an area after they check in and select their life jackets, nor areas for customers to store their coolers and picnic baskets or boxes. Therefore, their customers are moved out on the dock. They have outgrown this area. They check people in on the PT Sugar Beach property, move them out, load them up, put them out in the bay, bring them back, unload and reload, and this is continuous with all of their vehicles, their water sports vehicles throughout the day. So it's not just a one rental, it's more than that. So the even bigger question is, how many large boats will they bring down from the new water sports business down at the Irish location? That's a fear we have, we're really concerned. We live here. We were here when it was just, as you heard earlier, just mom and pop small resorts and motels along the beach, until Sugar Beach and Grand Beach were built. The water sports business should never have been allowed to get this big. The business got, the business never got a site plan approval, no revised permits or letters of permission. All this growth began in 2007 in violation of the Township Resolution, the Army Corps of Engineers, and Eagle's dock permit. And they blew the bay without reporting the spills to the appropriate agencies. You just heard some of our residents saying that they are the ones that are reporting the spills. Grand Travers, or excuse me, Port Travers residents have been complaining to the Township since 2016, and I was told that a former board president complained earlier than that. The Township was contacted in 2016 by representatives of Port Travers Condominium Association, both by letter and in person after an expansion of the TC business occurred. Among the complaints were the subject of accessory use to the hotel. A great deal of correspondence took place in 2019 after that, but in 2016, two members in this room were also visiting the Township Hall complaining about TC Water Sports. Let's see, a lot of correspondence took place in 2019 after numerous gas spills occurred, and the intensity of growth, both on land and on the water, occurred. Safety issues would occur, environmental issues, noise, and the increase in customers' trust financing in our complex. The growth activity in 2020 also resulted in more correspondence as well as in 2021. TC Water Sports is in violation of the East Bay Township Sugar Beach Resolution 2007-4, which includes the statement, "Resolved that the board has hereby approved this resolution as support for the application of bottomlands conveyance and permit for Sugar Beach Resort at 1773 US 31 North, for the placement of a seasonal dock not to exceed 310 feet in length with a nominal width of four feet, subject to the terms of the US Army Corps of Engineers, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality," and the permit numbers are there. That was for four boats and four jet skis. No more, they could have less, but no more. The application, the final approval of said agencies, and is subject to the specific understanding that use of said seasonal docks shall be limited to residents and guests of the Sugar Beach Resort at 1773 US 31 North, and said seasonal docks shall not be used for any other commercial purposes, except in conformance with the ordinance of East Bay Charter Township. We did not know this resolution existed until March. So I don't even know if Mr. Wendling even saw this back in November when he gave his opinion. If we had known that existed, we would have been in tears, screaming even louder than we are now. But we didn't know about it. Zoning, and that's our fault, but zoning ordinances are present for a reason, and we are trying to protect the values of our condominium property, the safety of our residents, and that our residents can enjoy living along the shores of East Bay. And let's not forget the gasoline spills. I'm an environmentalist, so this really bothers me. My letter from August 14th, 2019, to East Bay Township, located on page 63 of your packet here, talks about the four or five gas spills that occurred in the past 45 days adjacent to our residences. Part of the letter states, "This past Monday, the fumes from the gasoline spill again invaded the condominiums along the beach adjacent to the businesses, and some of the rooms at Sugar Beach also filled with gasoline vapors. One guest at the hotel called the fire department and their hazmat team. Analysts, hazmat team, and other fire equipment came to the resort. The hazmat group contacted the US Coast Guard, and three days later, another spill occurred, as shown on page 68 of the board packet, that shows the staff's writings to fact in on the water." The gasoline vapors from the lesser spills thrive our Port Travers residents inside, and they have to evacuate their decks, an outside area for the time being until the vapors dissipate. Of course, concern in the on-mark gasoline transportation and storage trailer, sitting in the hotel parking lot just over the fence, also is a concern. In closing, TC Water Sports is not an accessory business to the Sugar Beach Resort. If you don't practice enforcement or accountability to home and business owners within the Township, there is no consequence for failing to meet standards. You are allowing the people that need the enforcement to just do whatever they want to do, even if it negatively impacts their neighbors. I ask that you do not change the rules or accept all these whereas clause in the East Bay Mark 2020 Resolution, so that this standalone business gets their violated growth view as acceptable. By changing the ordinance to fit the immense expansion of this business on a piece of East Bay, they knew the rules and didn't follow them, and now they want to be grandfathered in. While limits are in place, they went from four boats and four jet skis to a total of eight watercraft that was acceptable to 24 watercraft that was not permitted. Onshore activity has increased three times. How many watercraft will they have out in five years, six years, 10 years? Again, will they be able to bring their watercraft down the beach from the Irish Boat Shop to 1773? This business is not an accessory business to the hotel, and is more burdensome on Port Travers residents than the hotel operation. I also kindly thank you for your time this evening, and I will end. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet who wishes to?
Good evening, Tim Webb, Granville Management, the property manager for Port Travers Condominiums. And I just want to quickly say, I want to acknowledge that all of the complaints, all the emotions that you have heard tonight, has come across my desk, my emails, my texts, my phone, over the years, and I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public comment. And Mr. Taylor, could you please reread Attorney Wendling's suggestion to us?
Yeah. Per Mr. Wendling, it is recommended that interested parties submit materials for the next 30 days the next thirty days, after which the record on the matter will be closed. The ZBA will then have that opportunity going forward to deliberate, to review, and hopefully come to a conclusion or decision in the month of December.
Okay. So in other words, if we understand it fully, the suggestion is to table this request until the next scheduled meeting?
That's correct, sir.
All right. Thank you. And with that, we'll open up this appeal to the board for discussion and action.
Just to clarify, the note here says December, but we're in the October meeting now, so would this actually be tabled until the November meeting?
No, we would, December is accurate.
Okay.
Yeah, we would require that amount of time to come in, correspondence to come in, be reviewed, and then December is when it will be.
Okay. So the scheduled December meeting, it would not be a special meeting as far as you're aware?
Not that I'm aware.
We have two other big items on the agenda already that have been submitted to ZBA for the November meeting, so I think that that's going to be a long meeting. So the applicant can absolutely pay for a special meeting that we can schedule sooner than December. Otherwise, our attorney is recommending that we keep this open to additional information correspondence for the next thirty days and then table it to November. In November, table it till December, and then deliberate and make a decision in December. So it wouldn't be on the agenda for November, is his recommendation.
Thank you.
I just got a few things. It's getting late. Does this variance have anything to do with the gasoline that seemed to be a big concern? Or no? Does this variance have anything to do with gasoline spills? Do we have any authority at the ZBA?
Yeah.
Okay. That's one I need to know.
Are you asking me?
Uh.
You were looking at me.
I know, I was, because I was asked, am I allowed to ask Chris this question?
That's a board discussion.
Yeah, that's for you to, sorry about that.
No, I appreciate the question. So all of this activity is attached to the land. It depends on the land. They're not operating a floating, they're not operating a floating business out in the bay. And so there's some cases we've submitted in the first memo, Mr. Wendling, I'm sure is going to take a look at, that basically say that a community that is on the shore of the water has regulatory authority over what, you know, that connection between the land and the water. So we're not asking you to deal with somebody who's a mile offshore out in the middle of the bay. We're asking you to deal with what's going on in the first fifty feet off the shore and on the shore as well.
So we do have authority for that, not the DQ or Eagle, whatever?
We cited the cases.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't really understand that. One more thing, just quickly.
Yep.
Does East Bay Township have any authority on docks and setbacks to other property lines?
Same answer.
Okay.
Same answer.
I got it. That's what I had. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Got it. Couple questions.
This is for the, for the Traverse City, the, could you come up to the microphone, please?
Water Sports.
Could you tell me, what are the hours of operation for your company, your business?
Our first rental is at nine a.m., and our last rental is seven p.m.
Okay.
It does vary somewhat with weather and seasonality.
Then another question is, do you know what the, what's the horsepower of your pontoons and jet skis?
Widely varies on an individual basis, anywhere from sixty to one hundred and fifty horsepower.
That's the pontoons?
That's throughout all the range of equipment. That's the entire range of horsepower that are.
A jet ski with a hundred and fifty?
No, I'm just saying like the lowest boat that we have is sixty, and the highest boat we have is one fifty.
Okay.
And everything in between.
How do you advertise, and by what means?
A lot of our advertising is in-room. We have key cards in the hotels.
All hotels?
In the hotels in our area, no, sorry, the key cards are in Grand Beach Sugar Beach. They're limited to those. We do have advertising in some of the other hotels. Online is a big thing. Repeat business is a big thing. I mean, a lot of the same families we've been taking for twenty-five years.
Yeah. Any other type of advertising, billboards or anything of that nature?
We have, it's pretty limited. I mean, without getting into too much proprietary information on our, on our business, I can say that our advertising budget has decreased by about ninety percent in the last ten years. So a lot of it has been, COVID was probably the biggest advertisement we've ever had. We had, the pictures you see of people on the dock out there was the busiest time we've ever experienced, and we haven't experienced anything like that this year.
Okay. What is the gas, or the capacity of the pontoons, the gallonage of the pontoons and the jet skis?
I don't have that information directly in front of me. If it's something that's important to you guys, then we could probably.
Just approximate.
I think a pontoon's about, you know, twenty-five, thirty gallons, I would guess.
Okay.
Our fuel containers are twenty-eight gallon approved portable containers.
Right. And the jet ski?
Jet skis, I think, are in the fifteen gallon range.
All right. Without going into your business model, do you rent by the hour? How do you rent the?
Could be an hour, could be half-day, full-day. In fact, with our boats, because of COVID, in an effort to decrease the amount of traffic, we went from a model that favored the one-hour rental because it's our highest rate per hour structure to only allowing people to book four-hour and eight-hour rentals in advance of the day, and so that we could fill in our schedule at a lower profitability in order to decrease traffic. Because for our own internal reasons, it was, it was hard to staff. It was hard to, it was hard to handle the amount that we weren't ready for.
Go ahead, please. The next question, what's your average turnaround time?
Again, there's such a turnaround time between rentals. Our boats, we put in the schedule to have a half-hour break between the coming and going to allow time for adequate cleaning. And of course, with COVID, we wanted to have more time than we needed so we could properly clean everything.
So one, one boat or one machine would be turned over how many times during the day?
I don't have that information.
And do you know offhand what the decibel rating is of your boats?
I don't, but I can tell you that with, with a four-stroke motor these days, they run so quietly that a common problem I have is customers trying to start the engine when it's already running, because you can't even hear it. And all of our fleet, I think the oldest boat in our fleet's a two thousand and eighteen, so all the latest technology and emissions.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. More questions, discussion?
No questions.
Be happy to entertain a motion?
Thank you.
I move to table appeal seven dash twenty-one for the. What? I guess it'd be, pure request seven twenty-one on the Port Travers Condominium Association and the Regional Business District until the December meeting?
Can, just real quick, before we move forward, just for a little bit more clarification for, maybe for myself and the board and everybody else. Strategy is, sounds like the interested parties are going to submit more documentation. There's going to be some involvement with our legal counsel at East Bay Township as well for the next thirty days or so, and we'll have another packet to review, an updated packet prior to the December meeting. Is this also going to be a public hearing as well, the December meeting?
Yes.
It will. Okay. Okay.
He slows the public hearing. He slows the public hearing instead of.
So we had a public hearing tonight that was advertised.
Right.
We've, we've gone through the whole public hearing process on this topic. I guess my question is, is there, with new information, new documentation, whatever happens over the course of the next thirty days, does this have to be advertised again for another public hearing?
Yeah, we'll plan to advertise it again.
Okay.
And have notices and mailing and just hold another one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, and I just want to say, obviously, there's, there's a lot for me. This is, this is a huge, you know, we deal with, we deal with garages and setbacks. Those are kind of the easy ones. There's a lot of information here. We, you know, I think that'll be good for probably everybody involved here in this process for us to table this and get some time to read through and make, you know, some good decisions here. And it, you know, hopefully with this summer that's hanging out there, end of mid-October, it'll probably come to an end here pretty soon. I don't know what the operation is with TC Water Sports right now, but I can't imagine they'll be renting any boats between now and December, or at least here shortly, so, yeah.
So we have a motion.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Tabled until December. Thank you, everybody. Of course.
We still got.
Reports.
Agenda to run through. All right.
So can we start the reports?
Go ahead.
All right. Could we please have an abbreviated town board report?
How abbreviated?
Up to you, sir.
So we had, we had a board meeting. I don't know if we want to wait on everybody to, want everybody to clear out, or?
Meeting still in session, folks? Oh, you, you may leave. We just need to talk with each other here. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I think it's safe now.
Okay. All right. We had a, had a meeting last night. A few, a few topics that, that we, we addressed at last night's meeting. There were some election equipment purchased for precinct number five. We approved a new name of Apple Hill for a road off of a four-mile or five-mile road, I think, so it was pretty exciting. Renee Edley, who is on our board, has now moved to the planning commission.
Awesome.
And also, related to similar topic is what we've been discussing for a while tonight, the board approved another bottom land conveyance for the construction of a dock at the old Irish Boat Shop for TC Water Sports. We got an update from Grand Travers County, and we spent a considerable amount of time reviewing a preliminary fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Yeah.
That was it.
Nice. Busy.
Yep.
Thank you. Could we have a report on the planning commission, please?
Yeah, unfortunately, we were very busy, so this may take about a couple of minutes. First of all, we amended the PUD on the Village of Chartwell and changed their layout from a vertical mix to a horizontal mix. And basically, what that was is that originally they had all businesses on the bottom, residents on the top. Now it's going to be more horizontal, where it'll be residences in one area and businesses in another. We approved an additional accessory building for special land use on a, on a person's property for an equipment building. We mentioned the site plan review for the former Irish, at the former property of Irish Boat Shop for TC Water Sports. Approved an ordinance amendment that changes the, clarifies that if in fact a property is now split, that split must conform to the zoning of the area. But prior to that, apparently, there was some confusion as to when splits happen, how in fact the size would be. Some have been under the actual zoning.
Okay.
And then finally, we moved and recommended to remove the cabin court from the zoning ordinances and also to change the camp and campground ordinance to a special land use permit. That was it.
Another busy evening. All right. Thank you. At this time, will entertain any public comment remaining?
Can I say public comment?
Yes, yes, you may.
This, this dawned on me. Chris Bizdoch was saying that he had a time limit of fifteen minutes. Does any other speaker have time limits, like five minutes, three minutes?
I certainly didn't impose any.
I think where that may come from is he asked to do a power party, and I asked to keep it restricted to roughly fifteen minutes.
I think that's great, but what about if someone says the same thing when we have fifty people here?
Yeah, so.
We have three minutes, five minutes?
Only three-minute time limit.
Well, can we do that here, too?
It's, it's at the discretion of the chair, and we are.
I thought we had protocols.
We are, we are working to kind of have a more formalized protocol for each one of the boards.
I'm, I'm ready for it. Just roll it out.
There's nothing superficial in place, but we are working on that, and it has been in the past at the discretion of the chair. So that's a good point.
I've always erred on, you know, the obvious, listen to everything, and if somebody has a point that might be meaningful, I think we're of benefit to hear it. But at some point, like you said, when we hear the same comments over and over, it's better to ask for a show of hands.
I want to say I'm the one that they gave their three minutes to, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So hopefully I got more than three minutes to give my little spiel. I just want to say thank you for listening to what's going on here, taking us seriously that you are postponing this, that you want to review this more clearly as to what is happening there. It's something that, I mean, I've been there thirty years at my condominium, and it's, it's really difficult with what we've got going on out there. We want to be friends with our neighbors. I mean, Saburi is a great guy, but there's some problems going on, so I appreciate you taking the time to look at what's happening out there.
Good. Thank you.
We're looking at, it's not only this year, next year, ten years from now. I mean, it's the future of our waterfront.
Understood.
So that's why we're, where we're at. And as Tim says, it's a little emotional for all of us as well. So again, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.
What's the two big ones next, ma?
Lake Horn.
Oh, hmm. That, that's really enough of a description, isn't it?
No need to say nothing else.
There's some pull-ups that I mentioned that didn't come through.
Yes, sir.
And then for the rest of you guys, all upload.
So one thing I would ask for, for the next meeting, to, to help.